Thanks, everybody for showing up today. I'd like to call a city council special meeting workshop for April fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Clerk, please call the role.
Dean.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Truster.
Here.
And Becken.
Here. We've kind of forgot to state, but the community you're currently speaking from, so.
How about if we go one more time?
Yes, let's start over then. Recall.
I'm sorry, I forgot all about it.
No problem. I could have mentioned that, but I didn't.
Mr. Dean.
Yeah, I think it's my fault for not kicking it off the right way. I am here in Sagatuck, Allegan County, State of Michigan.
Leo.
Sagatuck, Allegan, Michigan.
Louis.
Pensacola Beach, Escambia County, Florida.
Boy, I'm gonna have to look that one up. Peterson.
Not Escanaba.
Key West, Monroe, Florida.
Stanton.
Yes, Stanton here. Sagatuck, Michigan, Allegan County.
Truster.
Here in Key West, Monroe County, Florida.
And Mr. Becken.
Here, Douglas, Michigan, Allegan County.
Thank you. I'll catch on eventually.
No problem. Thank you. I don't believe we have any agenda changes. We purposely left this for a meeting for these two agenda items. So at this opportunity, at this time, we have the opportunity for the public to comment on the agenda items. Interested in addressing the council, please ask to be recognized, stating your name and the community you reside in and limit your comments to three minutes. For those who wish to be recognized, please do so.
Yeah, hi. I guess I'll go first if no one else is.
Sure.
Sure. My name's Kyle Konwinski. I'm a partner at Barnum LLP. I represent Dune Grass as it relates to their development. I just wanted to speak about the floating boat ordinance and two points in particular. We submitted a letter to the city council and the manager yesterday, but I would like to add to a few points. And first of that is the need for a special exception provision in the floating home ordinance. A quick read of the floating home ordinance quickly shows that is an attempt to have a one-size-fit-all approach. And under that type of ordinance, it is rather clear, and in particular in Dune Grass's situation, it could potentially exclude a lawful use of property in the city. And a special exception provision would allow an applicant to be approved even if every single condition in the floating home ordinance is not satisfied strictly. But as pointed out in the letter, there are arbitrary provisions and lengths and heights and setback requirements in the floating home ordinance that there are very valid reasons for deviation from in certain circumstances. And therefore, we think there's valid reasons that deviation should be allowed, especially in Dune Grass's situation where their proposed use is consistent with the city's benefit and residents' benefit. Along similar lines, the second point I'd like to bolster is the fact that Dune Grass, due to the substantial representations made directly to Dune Grass and the investment that Dune Grass made as a result of those representations, that there is a need for a grandfather clause that applies to Dune Grass. Currently, the moratorium that was set indicates that the grandfathering of floating homes starts on July twenty twentieth. Again, we're in a situation where there's no valid reason for July twenty twenty. It's an arbitrary date. It's in the middle of the season. It's not the start of a new year. There's really no basis for July twenty twentieth, except perhaps to try and exclude Dune Grass, which we can't exclude these people on a sole basis for that type of reason. It's also, you know, if we think back to twenty twenty, that's the middle of pandemic. Things were different back then. Again, that throws another complicating factor as to why, why would we choose July twenty twenty in a situation like Dune Grass where all but for the weather, the floating home would have been in there? So we asked that a more reasonable grandfather date starts once the new ordinance, perhaps, or one that would allow Dune Grass's lawful uses as proposed. My only last comment quickly is that as the letter I submitted, I did not see it in the packet, and I would ask that it be included in the public record. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council, please?
Yes, hi, there's a Mike Prokopik here.
Yes, Mike.
Hi, council. Mike Prokopik here. I am, my family are the owners at four thirty eight Park Street, which is directly across from the gazebo, across the river. We have been residents of the area for about, excuse me, we've owned a home in the area for just about forty years. I just wanted to give the council a little bit of background information on our relation to the riverfront property in question. We are the owners of, along with two other families in the area, of the southernmost eighteen feet of riverfront property, which is between Casa Loma and the Dune Grass land. In addition to that, we struck an agreement, a court-approved agreement in two thousand and six with the previous owners, the Presbyterian camp, for an easement for forty-seven feet of land just to the north of that, which is onto the Dune Grass property. I just want to make sure the council is aware of this. I came to a meeting in two thousand and eighteen to just make sure the council was aware of that information and spoke to the former city manager as well. And then subsequent to that, the land swap was enacted, which we were not informed of either by the city or by Dune Grass. And the city, in fact, now we have twenty, the twenty feet that the city swapped with Dune Grass is actually part of the easement property that we have. When we spoke to city staff, they were told by Dune Grass that that easement had been vacated, which it had not in fact been vacated. So I just wanted to make sure that the council is aware that there are other stakeholders in the area that are impacted by the land swap agreement as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I'd like to jump in now.
All right. All right, Jane.
Okay. I've been around here a long time. My father spent ninety-two summers here. I have to say, I was really upset about the tone of some people at the meeting Monday evening. It's not necessary. And I've sent out some letters. When I first saw the fence or the wall, I thought, oh, my God, when the ferry lands on the west side and the children run off that, they're excited, they're going to the beach, or they're going to climb Mount Bald Head. Cars going north are not going to see them, and there's going to be an accident, possibly a very tragic one. The same thing with this proposed houseboats. Where are they going to get the space for cars? As I understand it, each houseboat would require two parking spaces. Gets pretty crowded over here in the summer. In fact, it's jammed at times. I would hope that our city would abide by our ordinances. All of a sudden, everybody wants to call me today. Thank you.
Hello, no one is available to take your call. Please leave a message after the call.
I think Jane's all set.
Jane, are you finished?
Sorry, I muted her because it sounded like she couldn't get her.
Okay. All right. You want to pick up, Jane?
No, I'm finished. I just that.
Sorry about that, Jane.
I don't like to see people being threatened. We are a nation of laws and ordinances, and I think we have to abide by them, and I hope our council will follow that policy. I'm finished. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Jane. Next person?
Jim Lindsay.
Yes, Jim.
I live at four thirty Vine Street, and I wrote a letter in opposition to the fence based on the fact that the proper procedures did not appear to be followed. But I would also like to make a comment on the proposed houseboat ordinance. I've been advised by a local attorney who is up to speed on this matter, and I I tuned into the meeting today to find out why this ordinance is even needed. It would appear that existing laws and ordinances would address this houseboat thing, and I'd like to hear why this houseboat ordinance is even needed. Thank you, Mark.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. I think there'll be comments relative to that later in the meeting, okay?
Great. Thank you.
Yep. Go ahead, please.
Paul Hula, representing Dune Grass. First of all, I agree that we need to abide by laws, and as I've said many times now in the meetings, if there's a possibility for me to sit down with staff or a representation from council to negotiate something on this fence matter, be more than happy to do so to try to see if we can come up with a reasonable compromise. We acted in good faith and worked with city council at the time and relied on some of those things, but we certainly are willing to sit down on that. Secondly, there is actually exclusive parking over there and plenty of it. And so that is certainly understandable that that concern is raised, but there's actually exclusive parking for that area. And so we should be fine in terms of the parking. Again, you know, I'd like to reiterate on both the houseboat issue. I do not understand either why all of a sudden this became an issue, because I don't think it'd be needed either. I mean, there've been houseboats in the area for a long time. I'm not the only one, and there have not been any major issues that I'm aware of or that I've been told about by marina owners any differently from people that would rent out a thirty-seven-foot sailboat to people. So I don't really understand what the difference is between a thirty-seven-foot sailboat that people rent out for a week and they hang out in the dock or something that's considered a floating houseboat. So I hope likewise that council will take that into consideration and allow us to proceed along with all the other citizens that are interested in this. And again, I am certainly willing at all fronts to try to come up with some kind of mutually satisfactory agreement on both these issues to work together with the city if I'm given that opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council, please?
Yes, Gary Medler on Vine Street in Sagatuck. As to the fence, the issue is really simple. Dune Ridge put up an eight-foot solid wood fence at the river without a permit and obtaining a variance. And because of the prior denial of variance, it's unlikely they probably would receive a variance now. The agreement that Dune Ridge refers to claims that it was a privacy screen. The recommendation now to resolve this is that we'll utilize the provision that a wall of fence is required. That is inapplicable because that determination was already made during the site plan review way back when. And the determination then was that the abutting uses were not inconsistent, and they're not inconsistent. They're identical, the docking of watercraft, and it's simply a nuisance and needs to come down. And the city and Dune Ridge can scream and yell at each other after you require it to be torn down because, you know, the provision was void from the beginning, and you can decide how it got into the agreement and who permitted it to get in the agreement. As to the floating home ordinance, I don't think you need the ordinance either. I think if you look at the ordinance, you already have sufficient authority to prohibit them. The U.S. Supreme Court in two thousand and thirteen established the test to determine when a floating home was a watercraft or vessel. And under that test, the proposed Dune Ridge floating homes are not vessels or watercraft, which is the term in the ordinance. And under the ordinance, at a pier or a dock or a marina, whether commercial or private, the only thing that's permitted to be docked at a pier or dock or marina is a watercraft. These floating homes are dwellings or structures and subject to the regular ordinances with respect to housing. And because there's a twenty-five-foot setback on waterfront property, and you could only put one floating home on a piece of property at the riverfront, assuming that you met all the other ordinance requirements, you don't need an ordinance to cover floating homes. You know, if you find a floating home that's been docked to dock, you simply take appropriate action to abate the nuisance. But I don't think you need the ordinance, and the floating homes proposed by Dune Ridge simply aren't watercraft, and they are required to seek approval under the zoning for this district. And that would require planning commission approval, and then they'd have to obtain whatever variances they would need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council?
I do not see.
Go ahead, Aaron.
I do not see anyone else.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody, for your comments. There'll be a second opportunity prior to the end of the meeting for the public to address council one more time. So moving on to our meeting agenda, we'll start with item five A, the Dune Grass fence. Ryan, kick it off, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, council and guests, of which we have twenty-three, which is excellent to see. We have the benefit of having Jeff Sluggett on the call as well. So Jeff, I'll ask you to fill in anything that I leave out in an attempt to frame the discussion here. So one way to go about this today, and I'd recommend it, is to really not go through the history of the item and all the previous meetings that you've had to discuss the issue. You've done that before. I would suggest from this point on that you discuss, you know, the best path forward. And one way to do that is to think about what if the developer had to start over from a clean slate? You know, what could they do in regards to the fence per the existing ordinances, right? Or what could anyone do per the existing ordinances? And so with that, I mean, we have asked that the development team submit a revised site plan for the fence, which includes the plants, which would go to plan commission. One thing I would recommend at this point would be, and this is for your discussion, would be to get an outside consultant, planning and zoning, to take a thorough review of the issue and provide an opinion, which could be provided to plan commission in consideration of the revised site plan. And then some other things that you'll get into today, I'm sure, and was touched on during the public comment was, you know, do you want the Dune Grass folks to remove the fence? And what enforcement mechanism or instrument do you want to use to do that? And so we have the benefit of Jeff Sluggett to help us through, help us through that discussion. And what happens if they don't submit a revised site plan or if the fence doesn't come down? So those are just some thoughts about, you know, for the discussion today and a way to move forward. So Jeff, with that, do you have any additional thoughts or comments to kick it off here?
Sure. First, I want to make sure, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, you're coming through loud and clear, I believe, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Ryan teed it up perfectly for me, so let me just synopsize from my perspective, the fence issue. And again, more than glad to answer any questions that the council may have. But I do want to focus on the fence, and in some respects, our discussion, this discussion really isn't going to be significantly different relative to the fence than the discussion we had. I want to say it was either early, probably sometime in February of this year. And our opinion then was, and it remains today, that the fence that was installed was done so unlawfully. And that's true whether it's characterized as either a fence or a privacy screen. I don't think it candidly makes a difference because in both instances, the structure was put up in violation of multiple zoning ordinance provisions and administrative requirements. So I concur with Ryan. I think the idea of perhaps getting a third-party consultant to take a look at exactly what the nature of this structure is might not be a bad idea. But I think everyone needs to understand that the, under the zoning ordinance and under state law, the ability to make that determination and interpretation is left to the zoning administrator. So I think we can suggest a third-party consultant, but I think at least initially, it's the zoning administrator's determination to make. So how does it fail in terms of the zoning ordinance? As I said, I think multiple ways, not the least of which is the height, the height of the fence is in violation both of privacy screens and standard fencing. It's in violation of the planning commission approval for a structure that had been approved back in two thousand and seventeen. No zoning permits were ever issued for it. As the developer had been told, it had to obtain the DEQ permit that would have allowed, arguably allowed for, at least in the DEQ's vantage point, had expired before the fence was even installed. They failed to meet to the extent they wanted to rely on the planning commission's approval from two thousand and seventeen. They failed to meet various requirements and conditions the planning commission had imposed as part of its approval. So at least, again, from our vantage point, I don't think there's any question but that the fence is there and it's there illegally. Presumably, the argument that they're going to make is that we relied on the agreement that the council at the time approved. That's fine. You can argue that it's our position that a governing body does not have a right via contract, which is what we're talking about, to simply violate its own zoning ordinances. We think the law on that is abundantly clear, nor could the zoning administrator at the time, even if she granted approval, violate the zoning ordinance and have that be binding on the city. The whole concept, we get into, there are arguments relative to that issue, but we don't think, we think on balance, we're likely to prevail in terms of the fact that they entered into that agreement and had an obligation to know what the scope of the city's authority was or was not. So then the question becomes, what do we do? Well, ideally, and I think Mr. Hulley said earlier, he'd like to sit down and come up with a resolution of this. I think that's certainly something the council could consider, but any resolution presumably is going to have to start with having a structure, if any, in place consistent with the zoning ordinance, which means that you have to apply for approval. You don't apply after the fact. You apply before you install the structure. You obtain the necessary permits. You obtain the necessary variances, if any, are required. You comply with the conditions that are imposed with any approval. That's how it works. That's how everybody else is, that's what everybody else has to do, and that's what presumably the council is going to require here. If we cannot work out an amenable resolution whereby the applicant simply goes back to the planning commission or zoning administrator and gets the requisite approvals, what do we do? There's two principal approaches with a very small third option. The approaches are a violation of the zoning ordinance is what's known as a municipal civil infraction. So certainly, we could treat, and most run-of-the-mill zoning ordinance violations are treated that way. We issue a citation. It's processed through the district court. Typically, you're either in front of a magistrate or a district court judge. The difficulty with a case like this going through this straight citation process is you're going to be, you're going to be bringing up some arguments in terms of the city council's authority or the defendant will, that candidly may be outside the comfort zone of most district court judges. Doesn't mean they can't handle it. Doesn't mean the elegant county district court judges couldn't handle it. I'm just saying if it's out of, if it's out of the unusual, if it's out of the usual mainstream, and this is, sometimes district court judges have more difficulty deciding those types of cases. The other option is a violation of the zoning ordinance is by definition and pursuant to state law, what's known as a nuisance per se. In light of that, we could file an action in circuit court. We'd file a complaint to have the nuisance, in this case, the fence baited, removed. We could also file for what's called declaratory relief in an effort to get a definitive ruling by the court that the city could not basically contract away its obligation to comply with the zoning ordinance. The difficulty with circuit court action is that it tends to be a more sophisticated practice in the circuit court, which is good for this kind of case. The bad part is it's more expensive because it involves putting together a complaint, filing that complaint, and typically, there's some motion practice in any circuit court action. The third thing that I'd at least like the city council to consider would be some kind of communication. We raised this in our earlier letter back in January. Some kind of communication with Eagle in terms of what other reviews may be under consideration or pending right now relative to this site. As I said before, our interpretation of the permit that had been issued was that to the extent a structure was going to be permitted in approximately this location, that permit had expired significantly before the structure was even installed. So what we could be doing is filing an action with Eagle, basically asking them to review that and potentially take action and also to apprise them of the various issues that are pending on this site. So I apologize for the length of my response. Glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Joe. So council thoughts? Anyone want to kick it off?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Chris. All right, Chris.
Yes, two questions. First of all, before I make my comment, I would like clarification on a third-party zoning expert. What the benefit of that would be, since in essence it's saying, is that just to review what happened before and figure out where things went awry, or is it to look forward at options? I'm not understanding why we need to have a third party based upon what Jeff has told us. I'm not sure who answers that.
I, council member, I can try. This is Jeff, and if I bollocks it up, I'll let Ryan clean up after me. So the thought would be, and I'm just going to put our cards on the table. There's a dispute. I think there's at least some dispute as to whether this structure is properly classified as a privacy screen or a fence. Now, in some respects, as I said, I don't think it matters all that much in that regardless of what we call it or characterize it, I think it still violates the zoning ordinance. Having said that, though, there are different restrictions under the zoning ordinance relative to events, to a fence versus a privacy screen in terms of how they're processed, what permitting is or is not required, what heights are or are not permitted. So I think at least, as I understood it, one of the thoughts was, let's get a third-party consultant to come in and basically give the city, really the zoning administrator, an independent review and say, we think it's most, it is a privacy screen or it is a fence, and here's why. As I said before, now, at the end of the day, though, my opinion is the zoning administrator has the right to make that interpretation, and the only body that could As I said before, now, at the end of the day, though, my opinion is the zoning administrator has the right to make that interpretation, and the only body that could essentially challenge that interpretation, or the appropriate place to challenge that interpretation would be for a party withstanding to appeal to the zoning board of appeals. I don't think either the city council or the planning commission has the legal authority to override the zoning administrator's interpretation.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure where the, the goal is at the end of the day to have this. Do you want us to, I mean, I'm more than happy to give my opinion right now about how I feel of this. What would you like to see happen?
Well, I'd like to get input from each council person to see, one, if there is a consensus and what direction to go, and then rely on Brian and Jeff to, to guide us whether we can take appropriate action at, at this meeting or if we need to do it in a regular, next regular council meeting, which may be the better way to go because there's probably going to be some loose ends we want to tie, tie together, but. So I guess that's kind of up in the air, Chris, but that's kind of how I, if that helps framing it a little bit.
It does. I would agree totally with Jeff's opinion, and I think that we need to use every tool we have in our toolbox to get the fence removed. Everyone should have to go through the same process. It was not done regardless of whose fault it was. But I think we need to have them go through the process that everybody else has to, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Garnett?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, yeah, following up on Chris's comments. So, I have a little bit of history with this matter because I was on the Planning Commission, and then Chair of the Planning Commission, when a lot of this came through, so I was aware of the decision made by Plan Commission way back in 2017. Without getting into any of that, basically, because Dune Ridge allowed their permit to expire in September, by then erecting what was already against what Planning Commission had decided, an eight-foot fence, they basically were in violation. So it's a zoning ordinance violation, clear and simple. In my opinion, Mr. Sluggett's guidance to us is exactly spot on. That fence should be removed because it's unlawful. The process should start all over again with the Planning Kishman Commission, with the guidance of the zoning administrator, who has, we have hired that individual and we have appointed those individuals to make that decision and bring to us their decisions. It is not for us to usurp them or bypass them, whether, whether it's Dune Ridge or any other individual. So, number one, the fence must come down. It's a clear violation, and it's a, it's actually a nuisance and a safety hazard. And a revised site plan must be submitted to Planning Commission for the entire review process, including opportunities for public hearing. That's a process that went, that happened in 2017, and because they allowed the permit to expire, basically has to start all over again. So, that's where I'm at.
All right, thank you, Garnett. Ken, would you like to chime in?
Sure, I'm in agreement with Garnett and Chris all the way. I think that regardless of how we got here, and you know, obviously, clearly, there were some steps along the way that were, were less than adequate in terms of the information that we had on council to do what we did. I believe that we do need to step back and follow the rules as written, so therefore they would need to start all over again with the process.
Great, thanks. Lauren?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do believe the fence is in violation from everything that I've read. It needs to go, you know, back before, but I don't know that that fence is ever going to get approval through planning because it already did not get approval as far as I understand. So trying to resubmit plans for a fence, probably just going to get turned down once again. I do want to see a new site plan because I feel like the plans have changed many times, and we need to see what actually is going in that space. But as far as the fence, I believe it's a zoning violation. I don't know that we need a third-party person to come in unless that's to argue what our zoning administrator is saying as far as interpretation, but I feel like there was still a zoning violation, did not get planning approval, so I don't feel like, I feel like the fence should come down.
Right. Thank you. Scott?
I agree with council that the fence is unlawful. I believe it should come down, and I believe the process should go into a reset and go back to planning and/or zoning.
Okay, thank you. Holly?
Thank you. I would agree with council and I think everyone has to follow the law, same procedure as anybody else. As a city, we can't ignore our own zoning ordinance provisions, and we cannot act in a manner contrary to our own ordinances. So, I agree with what's been stated.
Okay, thank, thank you, Holly. Couple of questions for, for our attorney, Jeff. First of all, I, I concur with everything that's been said. I believe we need to basically start, start anew on the process. Question is, what steps are next then? Do we make a decision? Do we just file a violation? Notify the property owner? Do we file something in circuit court right away, or how, how does this all play out?
Well, let me, let me make a suggestion with the understanding, obviously, that you're the decision makers. My recommendation, though, would be, we send, I, I know there are representatives, obviously, of Dune Ridge on this call, so they know what's being said. They understand the council's position, so I think it's being articulated fairly clearly to them. I'm going to suggest that we reach out to them in the next several days, not weeks, next several days, and see if in fact they're willing to take the fence down as a first step. I think we can report back to you relatively quickly on that. I think we'll get an answer, yea or nay, fairly quickly. If they are not willing to do so, then we'll come back with a firm recommendation. I would, I might as well tell you, my, my inclination at this point is even though it's, it would be more expensive and that we'd be filing a complaint, we'd have to prepare a complaint, I'm inclined to think, given the players involved, the circuit court may be the preferable course of action here. But again, I'd like to at least reserve that until we have an opportunity to speak or try to speak with the developers. And then finally, I'd also like, if you, if you're so inclined, I'd like Ryan or Cindy or both to be authorized to at least reach out to Eagle and try to discern what's pending currently relative to this site. And again, we can then report that back to you for hopefully final decisions.
Okay, that was my, my next question's af- after you answered your first one, is that we can do certain steps concurrently, and, and that would be, wanted be to, to contact Eagle, and I guess we can decide at a later date whether we want to pull in the third-party zoning consultant. That might be helpful if, and when a new application is presented from the developer.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. So, that being said, what, what can council take action at this meeting, directing the, the city manager and city attorney to follow or act accordingly?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And, and perhaps for benefit of Jeff, we did advertise the meeting as a city council special meeting as opposed to a workshop, so it, it appears that you have clear consensus. I don't know if you've allowed all council people to speak. I don't know if anyone-
Who did I miss? I don't think I missed anybody. Started with Chris, then Garnett, then Ken, then Lauren. Then Scott, then Holly.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. So-
It's all right.
We, we can take official action and/or by consensus. Jeff, your opinion?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say to say, I honest, I mean, certainly if the council wants to, that's fine, but I'm comfortable, you know, based on the reactions I, I think we're getting from the council, simply proceeding, Ryan and/or Cindy will at least reach out and will report back relative to the Eagle situation. And Ryan and/or I will also reach out to the developer and try to see if they're willing to remove the fence pending the, pending a review of, you know, whatever else it is they want to do to develop that site, so.
Okay, I, I guess I'm still a little unclear then, what we would actually be making a motion for if one is actually necessary to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't help it, I'm an attorney, I talk too long. Short, short answer is I don't think you need to do anything today. I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. All right, and then you're going to act staff, and you will act on what you feel is the consensus direction council wants to take. Okay, thank you. Lauren, I'm sorry, I cut you off. No?
It was me, actually.
Oh, did I? Okay, Chris.
Uh, I, I think just to follow up on that, I, I would like to maybe lock things down a little tighter. I think we all agree the fence has to come down. I, I don't think I misread that. And Jeff, I appreciate the fact that they can call Eagle and you will talk to the owners. Do we have, at least, can we come up with a timeframe that moves this forward a little bit faster?
Ryan, when's our next meet, regular meeting?
We, well, we have a workshop a week from today. With a, with a meeting to follow on April 26.
I, you know, I don't know about you, Ryan, my thought is we can, I think we'll certainly be in a position to report even next week those discussions. Worst case, we don't have final answers.
I like the positive-
Would we be able to take action then at a workshop?
We can set up the meeting accordingly if necessary, as long as it's, I think, noticed out in adequate time. Yeah, I guess the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, any other comments from council? Are we comfortable with this approach? We're going to get a report back one week from today? I'm comfortable with it?
Yeah, this Garn, I'm comfortable.
Yep. Okay.
I'm good.
All right, I don't hear-
That's fine.
Okay, good. All right, so that kind of closes out, I think, our discussion on the, on the fence. Thanks, everybody for their comments. Moving on. Item 5B, floating homes, a draft ordinance and/or other potential action or direction from council. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this item, I believe we have Cliff Bloom on the call. He did prepare a document which was sent out to council yesterday to frame this discussion, so Erin, if you could please pull that up on the screen and I'll turn it over to Cliff.
Good evening, everyone. This is Cliff Bloom. Can you hear me okay?
Coming loud and clear to me. Council, we good?
Yep.
All right, Chris, welcome, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just to go back a little bit in time, this issue, I think, as pretty much everyone knows, came up back in January and February. At the time, both city staff and we looked at the ordinance, the, the various ordinances for the city, and none of them expressly address the issue of the legality and location and size and so on of houseboats or so-called floating homes. So we recommended that the city look at an ordinance. We, we worked with staff, we looked at a lot of other ordinances across the country, and we came up with a regulatory non-zoning ordinance draft that I think the most recent one that you have in your packet is February 25. So what we tried to do is come up with the, the broadest possible ordinance you could generally have, and the idea that the city council could look at it and pick and choose and take parts of it. We always anticipated that in addition to a regulatory ordinance, the zoning ordinance would probably also be amended, probably to a lesser degree. But, but both our office and staff wanted to have more direction by the city council because there's so many different ways you can go. You know, obviously, one way is just to ban them. Another way is to lightly regulate them, another way is to heavily regulate them. Obviously, as the city attorneys, we have no position one way or the other. It's a policy matter that the council's ultimately going to have to decide. I think as everyone knows, a moratorium is in effect and will be in effect for a while. If and when the city council either decides to do nothing or, or decides to adopt a regulatory and/or zoning ordinance, that moratorium can be rescinded if it happens early. Given some of the questions coming in this week, I prepared a fairly short paper, Mr. Mayor, dated yesterday, that I, I hope to at least answer some of the questions ahead of time. If I, if I could go into just a couple of things, there's been thoughtful arguments by various attorneys as to whether or not an ordinance is necessary, and with respect, the city attorney's office believes that a new ordinance is necessary. There's nothing in the existing ordinances that regulate houseboats or floating homes per se. So, if, if the council wants to regulate them under the existing ordinances, it has to be done by analogy. And we don't feel comfortable with that. If, if, if the city really wants to regulate something, then it really should say so in clear, unambiguous terms. So that property owners and boat owners will know what's allowed and what's not allowed, and we don't have to worry about courts saying it's unduly vague. So just to point out, we've got two, two learned attorneys other than us saying opposite things. We've got a local resident who's an attorney says you don't have to amend the ordinance, it's fine. And we have Dune Grass's attorney saying, look, we've reviewed the ordinances and we think the floating homes are allowed. So I think that's a pretty good position for our office to be is, is right in the middle. The two cases that were cited by a, a local resident who's also an attorney, the US Supreme Court case of Loesman v. City of Riviera Beach really involves some fairly esoteric admiralty law on the oceans, and whether or not in that particular case it was a vessel or a floating home. So there's some analogies perhaps to us, but it really doesn't answer our question fully. The, the Michigan case, Napoleon Township versus Nevins, is unpublished, so it's not technically binding, but courts can look at it, but that involved a, a boat house, not a houseboat, and dealt with setbacks. And so it's really not clear whether setbacks would apply to floating homes or not. So again, reasonable minds can differ, but given that there's nothing that directly addresses floating homes and the ordinances, we really think if the city council wants to regulate them, there should be new ordinance provisions. One of the ideas I know that, that some city officials have considered is perhaps chopping down the regulatory ordinance to be merely a licensing ordinance and to go into the zoning and amend it to allow floating homes in certain areas, for example, perhaps at full-service marinas. So, Mr. Mayor, we stand ready, willing, and able if the council can give us direction either today or at a future meeting to work with staff to alter the regulatory ordinance draft, and also to come up with the appropriate zoning ordinance amendments if desired.
Okay, thanks, Cliff.
By the way, Mr. Mayor, if, if I can point, I think I spoke less than Jeff did. I didn't time myself.
I think that's, I think you're accurate.
Thank you.
Okay, but I'm gonna let you speak some more, so I'd like a answer to this question. The existing moratorium ordinance is, when does that expire? Officially drop-dead date. Isn't like, wasn't it like for eight months?
Yeah, I, Mr. Mayor, I don't have it in front of me. I don't know if the manager has that. We put a specific number of months in there.
Mr. Mayor, Cindy and I just talked about this briefly. Cindy, the other date?
June 19.
I'm sorry, was that June 19?
June 19.
Thank you.
So we changed it back from eight months to June 19, which is two months. Okay, all right. I'll, I'll, I'll start off the conversation since I was last, the previous topic. I think this is, I think this is important because these are, although they are not a new phenomenon to our area, there are several in our- a new phenomenon to our area, there are several in our harbor. I think they're currently, and I am referring to stationary floating homes. There are currently no guidelines, no restrictions, no rules, no places where they can or can't be. It's just, could be open season anywhere, any place, at any time. And, uh, I kind of look back on this a little bit like, uh, the start of the, uh, vacation rental, uh, issues here in town, and, uh, who would have thought 30 years ago that we would have, you know, the plethora of the rentals in our town that we have now? I'm not saying the same could happen to, with floating homes, but, but it might, it might, and, and it's, I think, our duty to, uh, to research and, you know, guide the city and make decisions, uh, accordingly. So, the fact is, I would like to see us look at these as, from a zoning standpoint, because they, they may be practical, they may be reasonably, they may find in a full-service marina, and, you know, there may be a place for them in our community. But it's helpful then to have your zoning, your, your planning commission get involved in, in that process. And, uh, so, uh, my preference is to leave the moratorium in place and, uh, start looking at how these, uh, with the assistance of Cliff, along with Cindy and the planning commission, kind of start looking at a, uh, looking at this from a zoning standpoint, as either allowable use, uses in certain zones, so, uh, that's, that's, that's my thought. Next council person, should jump in?
Mr. Mayor, this is Garn.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I would, uh, support your comments and as as to leaving the moratorium in place for the time being, and I would suggest that we extend the deadline, um, to give our attorneys the time they need to, um, draft and guide us, if that makes sense.
When you say deadline, are you talking about?
Yeah, we said June, yeah, I think the moratorium was in place until June, I think that's, that's really not enough time, um, and it would be wise for us to utilize the summer, certainly with the moratorium in place. The existing, um, houseboats are grandfathered in, is my understanding. So, uh, really, um, basically, if we could extend it beyond June, that would give everybody enough time to do this the right way.
Oh, okay.
This is Chris, I agree.
Yes, Chris.
I agree with your comments and Garnet.
All right, all right.
I'll, I'll go third and, and agree with Garnet, Chris, and yourself, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that's the best way to go. I think this needs to, fundamental question is whether we deal with this in zoning or we deal with it with, uh, city regulation as with, as with the paper that was presented to us, the motion. And, uh, I think that's overly complicated. I mean, we'd have to go through that point by point and argue whether, you know, what setbacks are appropriate, blah, blah, blah. Whereas, if it were dealt with from a zoning standpoint, it would really be where is the appropriate place, uh, for these craft to be, so I support that.
Thank you. Lauren?
The, um, I hope you don't mind if I ask just a few questions during this time.
Absolutely, feel free.
I'm wondering is the moratorium seems just as broad as the ordinance, and the moratorium has a lot of language about houseboats as opposed to floating homes, and it just seems like there's a lot of vague language in the moratorium. So, I'm not sure what your thoughts are on the moratorium, other than everybody gets to just continue doing what they're doing, um, whoever had a boat in the harbor as of July. I guess that's my question, is just, some of the language in there seems a little vague, um, as far as what's allowed.
Is that something that Cliff can answer for us?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask Cliff to.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is one thing that every community seems to grapple with. There is no good universal definition of a floating home. And so, we tried to do the best we could. I, I know that, uh, Dune Grass's attorney has made some suggestions, which we're studying, and, uh, you know, it's just, it's one of those things where we're probably never gonna come up with a definition that's gonna satisfy everyone. If we, if we make it too broad, we might cover everything you consider a floating home, but catch some other things you don't want to have caught up, and vice versa. So, we're certainly open to tweaking the definition. I just think probably we could fast forward a year from now and, and new ordinance provisions might be in effect, and there'll still be some folks that aren't satisfied with those definitions, because there's just not a good one out there, a good, clean, succinct one.
Sure, and I understand that, you know, we, we want to do this through zoning, and it'll make a whole lot more sense about, instead of trying to figure out what a floating home is, it's more about where the floating homes are and where they're located and why they're allowed in a particular spot, as opposed to, "We just don't like floating homes," or whatever the case may be, because then that just gets muddled with the definitions and all of those things.
Although with respect, Lauren, you make a very good point. It, it, it's still, even if, even if ultimately i- it's in the zoning and you allow it in certain areas like full-service marinas, it's still gonna be important for us to define them as best we can if they're prohibited elsewhere. So, you know, you're, you're very astute, the definition's really important, and I think we can probably refine it. It's just one of those frustrating areas of the law, it's probably never gonna get to the point where we say we're, you know, we're 100% comfortable with it.
Okay, so then that leads me to my next question. Are floating houses a house on a barge without a motor? Are they regulated by building permits, or are they regulated by the coastline?
Mr. Mayor, can I respond?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Very good question, we've got two attorneys that disagree about that, um, and, and the emails, the letters, and so on, it's, it's really not clear. I mean, you can make an argument that a floating home of the type that Dune Grass is proposing should be classified as a dwelling and be subject to the building code and the setbacks and so on, but, again, when you look at the building codes and you look at the zoning ordinance, it doesn't really nail it. So, that, that, that is uncertain, and that's why we think an ordinance is absolutely necessary, to, to try to nail this stuff down as much as, as humanly possible.
Okay, um, so, you know, in a nutshell, I'm in favor of, um, making this more of a zoning issue, um, and having our attorneys, um, you know, work on that aspect of it. I guess the moratorium stays in place, I wish the language was better, but I don't know what else we can do.
All right, thank you, Lauren. Holly?
Um, I, uh, I understand that there's a tension between, uh, the broadest possible ordinance and not regulating by analogy, um, but, you know, to, to Lauren's point, the, the language in the resolution, um, gets a little far-reaching. I, I understand what you're saying, Cliff, but, um, I too am gonna agree with Ken and what's been said earlier and what Lauren just said, and I think we need to focus this on a, on a zoning issue, um, and this is, this is something that we really need to talk about, uh, and I would like the opportunity to do this right, since there are multiple different, uh, opinions, and I would suggest that we keep the moratorium in place until November, so that we can, um, do this properly.
All righty, thanks. Scott, your comments, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for staff and council, um, is Councilwoman Leo's suggestion of November adequate for your, um, planning purposes to?
Yeah, maybe Cindy is in a better position to address that, Cindy and Ryan.
Thoughts, Cindy, Ryan?
I think that November would give us adequate time for fleshing out a zoning ordinance. We would need Cliff to prepare that for us, and we could bring it to our, um, planning commission. That process does take up to six weeks, so we do need more time than June 19.
Okay, well, I.
Mr. Mayor, we.
Go ahead, Cliff.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we will accommodate staff and the council, whatever, whatever time, time you need to buy, we'll accommodate that.
All right, so if, if council would like to extend that ordinance to November 19 at, at a future, sometime between now and the expiration date, you don't see any issues with that?
No, you know, the, the conventional wisdom with moratoriums is the shorter they are, the more likely they are to be upheld in court. So, if you went to November, my math is terrible, but I think that would be total about a nine or 10-month moratorium. And that probably is a little longer than most municipalities, I mean, you see them as short as, as two or three months. I would say most of them that you see are probably four to six months, but nine months is not unheard of.
All right, I didn't, okay, thanks, Scott, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, it's fine, thanks. So, yes, I support extending the moratorium, um, to whatever the appropriate date council and staff think will work in terms of us voting and getting, you know, extending it. So, let's do that. And I do agree that I think a stronger emphasis on the zoning aspects of this, rather than getting into the infinite debate on what's a home, what's a vessel. I, I, I think putting a stronger emphasis on the zoning implications and the zoning considerations is a great idea, and I'd like to see that type of thinking built into the next ordinance we look at.
Okay. Okay, thanks. So, uh, I guess the consensus is to, uh, turn this over to Cindy and staff and our, our attorneys to proceed down a road of, uh, and our planning commission, look at this from a zoning ordinance perspective, and extend the, uh, moratorium out to no later than November. Uh, I don't think we have to act on that moratorium date today, uh, maybe we can have a more formal direction and motion prepared by the attorneys regarding, regarding that, uh, aspect. Any other council comments? Is that, I guess, has that summarized things? You wanna?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Just a question, um, are we leading, um, as far as coming up with a zoning ordinance, is this council leaning towards floating houses being allowed in full-service marinas? I don't feel like we're giving anybody any guidance on our thoughts on where they belong, or is that up to zoning to decide where they belong? We don't decide, zoning decides?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Planning, planning would really, planning would basically kick the, you know, kick the topic off, I believe.
I got you.
They certainly, we certainly can put in our, uh, comments via Cindy or, or Ryan, okay? I have an open mind, to be perfectly honest with you. You know, if it fits within some existing, you know, existing properties, uh, business plan or within that zone, and, uh, uh, hey, more power to them, if they have the proper infrastructure.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I'm open to it, you know? I just don't think we're ready, we're, we're at that point yet, for sure.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure can.
I'm assuming that, that the city council's gonna have a final word on this anyway, right? Planning commission's gonna recommend something, to propose something to us, we'll still get the vote on it, all right?
Yeah, we still have to approve the final ordinance or amendment or zoning, there were zoning amendments, I believe.
Okay.
But Cindy would know more about that. Any other council questions on this?
No, great.
Cindy, you have any closing comments?
I think I understand what the direction is, and we'll go there.
All right, okay. Thanks, Cliff, any closing comments?
No, very good discussion, and that, I think that gives us some pretty good guidance, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, all right, thank you. Ryan, you all set?
Got it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and so now we'll, uh, move on to, uh, again, public comments by the public. Same rules apply. If you wish to address council, please identify yourself by name, community of residence, and, uh, limit your comments to three minutes.
Jane Underwood, Sagatuck, I just want to say my faith in our local government has been restored, our laws and ordinances are going to be followed. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Paul Hula, um, Grand Rapids, Michigan, Kent County. Uh, with respect to the fence, uh, just a little bit of color real quick, is that the intent actually of the discussions was to put the fence on city property, and that's what the original document said, it somehow got deleted from the other document. We in fact met with city staff before we put it on there to ask for the location, so again, we actually in good faith. Having said all that, um, I, I would like to ask staff to talk to the planning board, and let's be practical. If, if, let's not please ask me to spend any more money than the thousand stars we already spent, uh, and let's see if there's no way of this fence getting approved with a new plan, let's just work together on how to resolve this amicably in one fashion or another, rather than just going through the motions of a zoning plan and then, uh, just having it shut down and saying, "Go, go fly a kite." Also, I'd like to feel that council, uh, you know, hopes, they recognize that, uh, everybody, including councils working in good faith when this is approved, are not trying to, uh, get around laws, and, uh, hopefully, we can come up with some amicable arrangement as to the costs that are being incurred on all of this, uh, as, as a result of this. So, anyways, that is, that is, I think, my hope, that we are not just going to be asked to go through the motions to be shut down, but rather have constructive, efficient, good discussions to get to a point that everybody feels we are within, uh, the proper scope of, uh, of the law. And as to the, uh, uh, floating home ordinance, again, you know, we've got the grandfathering issue that I would like you to, uh, to think about, especially by having the entire season now be destroyed and, uh, loss of revenue as a result of that, um, you know, uh, decision. So, that too is somewhat disappointing, but again, I hope I can work with city council and staff to make this work, uh, for, for all of us in the best, best possible way, and thank you for taking this up in a, uh, serious consigns matter, and, um, hope to, to talk to all of you in our, uh, more joyful circumstances from my perspective, so thank you so much.
Thank you for comments, sir. Anyone else wish to address council?
Yes, Gary Medlar.
Yes, sir.
When I reviewed, uh, the ordinances across the country following the Supreme Court case in Loesman, so many of them simply adopted the test in Loesman for determination of when a floating home is not a vessel, or under our ordinance, a watercraft, and would suggest if you're going to go forward with an ordinance, that you do the same, so that you have a, a set standard that's been approved by the U.S. Supreme Court. And I, I think that, that gives sufficient guidance and then would reduce the, the amount of amendments you have to require. And, uh, the bottom line, it's enforcement that's always gonna be the issue, and so you have to make an ordinance that's simple enough so people know what they can and can't do. But with regard to the Dune Ridge, uh, floating homes, they don't even pass the old Michigan standard of floating, uh, log, and that used to be the standard to determine if it was a navigable vessel. And, uh, because it's non-motorized, and as I understand it, it has to be put on a barge and then, then docked. But again, a dock pier and marina can only dock watercraft, not a structure or a dwelling, which is what the Dune Ridge floating homes are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Kyle Conwinski, um, the attorney on behalf of Dune Ridge. First, I would just point out that the floating log test has nothing to do with whether a vessel is navigable, that test applied to whether water bodies were navigable, it's beside the point, but I thought I'd point out that mistake. I wanted to start initially by just saying, actually, thank you for the fact that the council is gonna reach out to you. for the fact that the council is going to reach out to either me or Mr. Hewley and begin at least a, a good faith negotiation process or discussion. And also I appreciate the fact that the council took our comments seriously, where clearly he had read them, still was considering them and had looked into them, which is oftentimes the only thing an attorney can ask for when a letter gets written to someone is that it's seriously considered, so I appreciate that. And the last thing I'd say is, it, it seems to me there is this belief that a moratorium is somehow absolutely necessary. And the only thing I would point out is that there, as everyone's recognized today, there was no moratorium indefinitely going back. And, and I haven't heard anything that there were major issues with houseboats being present in the community. And so I, I would question and in fact, perhaps contend that the length of a moratorium now is getting, you know, unreasonable. Why is it needed? We've never had one for X number of years and now we're acting like we have to have one for three more months. And, and, and again, as kind of Mr. Hewley just mentioned, adding on top to the unreasonableness is, is you do lose a year. You lose a year of use, you lose a year of revenue if it's something that produces revenue for you. And especially when substantial investment is already made in that based upon good faith representations by all of them. So that's all I have to say. Again, I want to say thanks to everyone for the odd work, consideration of the comments we submitted. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council?
Yes, if I could.
Sure.
Yeah, I was just here today just because I found this all a very fascinating discussion from the aspect of zoning and, you know, how, how this evolved and had no desire really to make a comment. But there's something that your attorney said that, that kind of sticks in my craw a little bit. And that was when he said that if a planning commission or a board or a council passes a rule or an ordinance that's in violation or that the thing that they passed or agreement that they've entered into is contrary to what their zoning rules or regulations say, that it, it cannot stand on itself. And I guess where that really bothers me is that if a applicant or a person is relying, and I'm not even talking about this situation, but any situation, is relying on the representations that are being, being given by a council or a planning commission or an agreement that's been made and in good faith moves forward, but then can be told at any time that if they made a mistake, that that can be taken away from them. And I'm thinking of a situation that happened in Douglas where a builder was given on Water Street a building permit to build, then a new zoning administrator came in and said, nope, it doesn't fit setbacks. We're taking away your permit and you can't continue, we're putting a stop work order on you. And eventually that builder went into bankruptcy. Several years later, the court did uphold his position. But I guess my point is, is just caution that we can't just say that any decision that's made by a council or a planning commission or an agreement that's entered into with a municipality because some technicality or something that wasn't observed before can be just taken away. So just something to think about, and that's my comment.
All right, can you identify again by name, Dick?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dick Wasken, Sagatuck Township, Algen County.
All right, thank you. Any other, anyone else wish to address council? Aaron, how's it look?
I do not see anybody else.
All right, okay, thank you. Final comments by council, start of Garnett?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. No, thank you, I've, I've really found this to be a very good discussion and this entire process has reinforced my faith in the planning commission and its purpose in our government and our governor, our government and any government structure, that it is a good start to a process and leads eventually to the right solution and should always be followed. So I appreciate also all the number of folks who've gotten on this call today and the letters that we've received over the last week or so. Much appreciated and everybody should be assured that we've read them all. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenny, closing comments?
Yeah, echoing Garnet's comments, I applaud my fellow council members and our mayor for getting us through the, what will be a very difficult situat, process in a, in a good faith, reasonable manner. So staff, legal council and, and our council, thanks for that. And likewise, thanks to all of the public who participated in, in the discussion and sent those their opinions. We take them seriously.
Thanks, Lauren?
Oh, yeah, I appreciate all of the input that I've gotten, whether people had written in letters and everyone I reached out to to get some clarification on a lot of things, whether it was marina owners, presidents of yacht clubs in town, everybody I spoke to that kind of gave me some insight into, you know, all of these issues that we're dealing with. We had so much to read through and I know that council spent a lot of time working on all of this. And I applaud us all for, you know, the work that was put into this. It's leaving me with a lot more questions than answers. You know, we do need to look at the land swap deal and the easement that was brought up today. So I think that's something else our attorney's going to have to look into. But otherwise, I'm looking forward to seeing a resolution to this.
All right, thank you. Chris?
I, I just echo what everyone else has said and I appreciate so much the calls and emails that we got. And I would say I'm very pleased with the way the discussion went. As Jane Underwood said, we are a nation of laws and they apply to everybody equally. And I think I'm just very proud of my fellow council members today. Thank you to the staff and thank you to our attorneys and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Holly?
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
All right, thanks. Scott?
Yeah, I, I would just like to thank the public for all the comments over the past several weeks about, about this. It's been very helpful to me to hear from our community. I'm also very proud of this body because, you know, like it or not, Sagatuck is changing. It is becoming increasingly popular. Everyone loves the community, everybody wants to come here and visit. And sometimes that requires some deep forward thinking to make sure that we continue to provide a safe and welcoming community for all. And so I would like to thank this council for, for actually doing this type of forward thinking and planning for, for the future.
Okay, thank you. My closing comments are, first of all, I want to say thanks to our staff, Ryan and his staff, Cindy, Aaron, they all put a lot of time into this, this meeting and, and a lot of time on the phone with, I know not only myself, but a lot of the other council, council people. So that time is appreciated. I think this speaks to the passion our community has represented by this council for our waterfront, our harbor and our, our natural environment. And that, that's comforting, that's comforting. I also appreciate the input from our citizens, summer residents. And I also appreciate the civil discourse we had. And this can be an emotional issue, so hopefully that can continue on the road, down the road. So wrap it up, I want to thank everybody for attending and entertain emotion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Chris, so moved.
Yeah.
Motion by Louis, second by Peterson to adjourn the meeting. The clerk, please call the role on the motion.
Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Bean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yeah.
Traster?
Yes.
And Beckett?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the rest of the day.